All right, well, let's start with a word of prayer. We're gonna jump in and we'll just briefly go over Gog and Magog, and then keep moving on because we gotta get to the judgment. All right, let's pray.
That quick?
That quick. Lord God, thank you for, thank you once again for the ability to come together. I thank you for everybody in here. I thank you for their heart, their devotion to you, their desire to learn and grow and to continue to be transformed. And that is our prayer tonight, that that happens, that's facilitated by your Spirit as we read your Word. That Father, you would stir those things in us to bring forth further change, that we would be further transformed into the image of your Son as we follow after him, as we look for his coming. So we pray your blessing on this reading tonight. And we do this for your glory. We pray all of these things in Jesus's name. Amen. All right. So we were reading Revelation 20, and we got into the section seven through 10. And let me read that again real quick. We left off on verse nine, but just to kind of take the section as a little chunk there. "When the thousand years are completed, Satan will be released from his prison and will come out to deceive the nations which are in the four corners of the earth, Gog and Magog, to gather them together for the war; the number of them is like the sand of the seashore. And they came up on the broad plain of the earth and surrounded the camp of the saints and the beloved city; and fire came down from heaven and devoured them. And the devil who deceived them was thrown into the lake of fire and brimstone, where the beast and the false prophet are also; and they will be tormented day and night forever and ever." All right. So where we left off, so in our discussion of verse eight, we had mentioned Gog, Magog. So there's a few different resources here, just kind of want to pull together. We did talk a little bit about it, but just by way of review, in Ezekiel 38 and 39, Gog is the ruler and the kingdom is Magog. And then they waged war against Israel, and we'll actually go to Ezekiel here in just a moment. So Ezekiel's identification of Gog appears to be connected with the table of nations in Genesis 10. As he associates Gog with Magog, Meshach, Toubal, and Gomer, all sons of Japheth. The description of Gog as an invading power follows standard prophetic themes with multiple allusions to Isaiah. Isaiah chapter two, verses two through four, and Isaiah 10, six. "The notion that Yahweh will incite Gog to attack the people of Israel in service to his purposes and later turn against the invader in wrath is rooted in Isaiah's theology of dual agency." That's a fun one. Isaiah 10, 12, for a more specific reference. Ezekiel may have been influenced by prophetic descriptions of an enemy from the north, as we see mentioned in Jeremiah one, and perhaps as connected this prophecy with Gijaz of Lydia, a renowned king from Anatolia. "The cosmic disruption described in Ezekiel 38, 19 through 23, is rooted in the day of the Lord, prophetic tradition, in which God appears as warrior, judge, and king to defeat his enemies." We also see this in Joel, chapter two. I think I had mentioned last time how some of the, you know, we have Augustine, Theodorot, and a number of others, like kind of really took liberties in their interpretation of Gog and Magog. So Augustine's interpretation is that Gog and Magog represent those in whom the devil dwells and the devil himself. And so that's in his City of God, chapter 10. So... Now, let's go to Schnabel. It's been a while. So if you remember, Dr. Schnabel put this together. It's 40 questions about the end times. It's been quite a while since I've read from this, but it's always just good stuff, grounded, researched. So who are Gog and Magog in Ezekiel? He says, he writes, "The prophet Ezekiel prophesies that in the more distant future seen from his place in history in the sixth century B.C., the conflict between the God of Israel and the evil in the world will come to a climax in which the nations who seek to harm God's people will be utterly and completely destroyed." "The location of Ezekiel's Gog is uncertain; even the interpretation of the name is difficult. Suggestions for the derivation..." Derivation. Yeah. That doesn't sound right. All right. "And meaning of the name Gog include the following: One, a mythological locust giant." So we have that in Amos, chapter seven, verse one, where the Greek translation reads, "Gog." "Two, a personification of darkness from the Sumerian word 'gud,'" which means darkness. "Three, from the place Gaga," mentioned in the Armana letters. "Four, from Gaga, a deity mentioned in Ugaritic literature." "Five, more plausible is the connection with Gijaz, the name of the king of Lydia, who ruled from 668 to 644 B.C. Since this king had died, by the time Ezekiel wrote down his prophecy, this identification is unlikely. Some have suggested that Gog, or Gijaz, is not a personal name, but the name of a royal dynasty, and that Ezekiel refers to Gijaz's great-grandson, Aliatis, who revived Lydia as a dominant power in Western Asia Minor, technically to the north of Israel." "So there's no hint that the kings of Lydia ever posed a threat to Judah, though. To assume that Ezekiel prophesied events in the 21st century creates the problem that the long prophecy in Ezekiel 38, 39 would be irrelevant for his audience, which is unlikely. Ezekiel's prophecies concerning Tyre and Babylon all refer to contemporary nations in the 6th and 5th century B.C." So once again, just kind of getting a little bit more into Schnabel's idea. So in Revelation, though, more specifically, he writes, "The prophet John explains that at the end, before God's new world becomes a reality, God will utterly and completely remove from the face of the earth the instigator of all evil and all who followed him in rebellion. In Revelation 20, verse eight, Gog and Magog are not individual nations; from the north, consisting of military troops. Gog and Magog are all the inhabitants of the earth who follow the beast rather than the lamb; that is, all the unbelievers who persist in their rebellion against God. Many interpret Revelation 20, seven through 10, as the final battle between the nations who have been deceived by Satan after the millennium. Others interpret the event as the final judgment upon Satan and the unrepentant at the time of Jesus Christ's return. The choice between these two possibilities depends on how we interpret the millennium. Chronological questions aside, there is agreement that the judgment of God and Magog, Gog and Magog, is God's final judgment on unrepentant sinners." So now, let's actually read Scripture. All right, turn with me, if you will, to Ezekiel. Let's start in chapter 37. Starting at verse 24, and this is right after the Valley of the Dry Bones, the vision explained, and then a reunion of Judah and Israel. Yeah, okay. I encourage you to read the whole chapter, but Ezekiel 37, starting at verse 24. Jackie, have I missed anything so far? Like, three hours' worth of stuff? Really, though, if there's anything that's especially notable, chime in, please. All right, starting in verse 24, "My servant David will be king over them, and they will all have one shepherd; and they will walk in my ordinances and keep my statutes and observe them." That is speaking of the Torah. "They will live on the land that I gave to Jacob, my servant, in which your fathers lived, and they will live on it, they and their sons and their sons' sons, forever; and David, my servant, will be their prince forever. I will make a covenant of peace with them; it will be an everlasting covenant with them; and I will place them and multiply them, and will set my sanctuary in their midst forever. My dwelling place also will be with them; and I will be their God, and they will be my people; and the nations will know that I am Yahweh who sanctifies Israel when my sanctuary is in their midst forever." Reading on in 38, "And the word of Yahweh came to me, saying, 'Son of man, set your face toward Gog, of the land of Magog, the prince of Roche, Meshach, and Toubal, and prophesy against him; and say, 'Thus says Yahweh, Elohim, behold, I am against you, O Gog, prince of Roche, Meshach, and Toubal. I will turn you about and put hooks into your jaws; and I will bring you out, and all your army, horses and horsemen, all of them splendidly attired, a great company, with buckler and shield, all of them wielding swords; Persia, Ethiopia, and Put with them, all of them with shield and helmet; Gomer with all its troops, Beth to Garmah, from the remote parts of the north, with all its troops, many peoples with you. Be prepared, and prepare yourself, you and all your companies that are assembled about you, and be a guard for them. After many days, you will be summoned; in the latter years, you will come into the land that is restored from the sword, whose inhabitants have been gathered from many nations to the mountains of Israel, which had been a continual waste. But its people were brought out from the nations, and they are living securely, all of them. You will go up; you will come like a storm; you will be like a cloud covering the land, you and all your troops and many peoples with you.'" Thus says Yahweh, Elohim. "It will come about on that day that thoughts will come into your mind, and you will devise an evil plan; and you will say, 'I will go up against the land of unwalled villages; I will go against those who are at rest, that live securely, all of them living without walls and having no bars or gates, to capture spoil and to seize plunder, to turn your hand against the waste places which are now inhabited, and against the people who are gathered from the nations, who have acquired cattle and goods, who live at the center of the world.'" Shabbat and Deden. "And the merchants of Tarshish, with all its villages, will say to you, 'Have you come to capture spoil? Have you assembled your company to seize plunder, to carry away silver and gold, to take away cattle and goods, to capture great spoil? Therefore prophesy, son of man, and say to Gog, 'Thus says Yahweh, Elohim, on that day, when my people, Israel, are living securely, will you not know it? You will come from your place, out of the remote parts of the north, you and many peoples with you, all of them riding on horses, a great assembly and a mighty army; and you will come against my people, Israel, like a cloud to cover the land. It shall come about in the last days that I will bring you against my land, so that the nations may know me when I am sanctified through you before their eyes, O Gog.'" Thus says Yahweh, Elohim, "Are you the one of whom I spoke in former days, through my servants, the prophets of Israel, who prophesied in those days for many years that I would bring you against them? It will come about on that day, when Gog comes against the land of Israel," declares Yahweh, Elohim, "that my fury will mount up in my anger; in my zeal and in my blazing wrath, I declare that on that day there will surely be a great earthquake in the land of Israel." Have we read about a great earthquake in Revelation? "The fish of the sea, the birds of the heavens, the beasts of the field, all the creeping things that creep on the earth, and all the men who are on the face of the earth will shake at my presence; the mountains also will be thrown down, the steep pathways will collapse, and every wall will fall to the ground. I will call for a sword against him on all my mountains," declares Yahweh, Elohim. "Every man's sword will be against his brother; with pestilence and with blood, I will enter into judgment with him; I will reign on him and on his troops and on the many people who are with him; a torrential rain with hailstones, fire, and brimstone. I will magnify myself, sanctify myself, and make myself known in the sight of many nations; and they will know that I am Yahweh." Skipping over to chapter 39, verse 21. "And I will set my glory among the nations, and all the nations will see my judgment, which I have executed, and my hand which I have laid on them; and the house of Israel will know that I am Yahweh their God, from that day onward. The nations will know that the house of Israel went into exile for their iniquity because they acted treacherously against me; and I hid my face from them; so I gave them into the hand of their adversaries, and all of them fell by the sword. According to their uncleanness and according to their transgressions, I dealt with them, and I hid my face from them." So then we can get into Israel being restored. But you have the gist of Gog and Magog and their attack on Israel, who had been gathered from the nations. So you can go back and read the rest of 39 if you want. So... There's a number of different options as far as interpreting who Gog and Magog is. But here, in Revelation 20, be it literal or symbolic, for everybody that is in rebellion against Yahweh, we see that when the thousand years are completed, Satan will be released from prison and will come out to deceive the nations which are in the four corners of the earth, Gog and Magog, to gather them together for the war; the number of them is like the sand of the seashore. So last week, we got into a little bit of the logistics, right? Of how many people are there going to be around at that time? And are these the descendants of the resurrected martyrs? Or are these the descendants of those who were alive when Jesus returned? Depending on your eschatology, right? So, jumping into verse nine. "And they came up on the broad plain of the earth and surrounded the camp of the saints; and the beloved city; and fire came down from heaven and devoured them." So the nations that had, this is Mount here, the nations that had been gathered by Satan surround the millennial capital and are devoured by fire from heaven. So the phrase, "the breadth of the earth," is not clear, but in this context, it seems to refer metaphorically to a great plain sufficiently large to accommodate the multitude of assailants determined to bring down the citadel of the saints. In Habakkuk, chapter one, verse six, the same expression is used in connection with the Chaldeans, "that ruthless and impetuous people who sweep across the whole earth," or "the breadth of the earth." So the camp of God's people is to be understood in the Old Testament sense of the Israelite encampments during their wilderness wanderings. The same language is used in Exodus, chapter 14, verses 19, 20, as well as Numbers, chapter two, verse two. So it's a reminder that while on earth, the people of God will always be pilgrims in a foreign land, the camp of God's people is also the beloved city. "The fire that comes down out of heaven is reminiscent of the account in 2 Kings 1, in which Elijah twice calls down fire from heaven that consumes groups of fifty soldiers with their captains. This incident had apparently impressed the brothers James and John, who during the days of Jesus's earthly ministry wanted to call down fire upon an unreceptive Samaritan village." Luke, chapter nine, verses 51 through 54. "The judgment of fire upon Gog and Magog is also in mind." So the fire upon Gog, Ezekiel, chapter 38, verse 22, that connection. And Magog, Ezekiel 39, verse six. Does any questions on Gog and Magog that I can quickly reply, "I don't know"? No, really, any questions? So just from reading Schnabel and, Schnabel, and the Lexon Bible Dictionary, I mean, really, it's kind of a mystery. We don't know definitively who Gog and Magog is, right? So there's some really good theories out there, but anybody that tells you it is 100% for sure the Russians, we don't know for sure, okay? Just because they're north, but there's plenty of other countries that are north, and plenty of them that really had had a negative effect upon Israel because anybody that was going to attack was going to be coming in from the north. Nobody was heading straight from the west, or from the east, into Israel. They weren't marching across the desert. So, yeah, Ezekiel, Isaiah, Genesis. Uh, let's see. So Genesis, chapter 10, verses two and three. Magog is technically mentioned, First Chronicles, chapter one, verse five. It's in a list of nations, or I'm sorry, the sons of Japheth. Ezekiel 38, verse two. Plenty of times after that, Ezekiel 39. Is there another meaning for the north? Not that, not that I know of. Jackie, have you? Is there anything like that? I haven't, I did not encounter anything in any of the research I did. Sure. Yeah, I mean, some of the maps I even saw, you know, were pointing to Europe as opposed to Russia, so... But, you know, like you said, that really wasn't within the scope of their known world. So if you're thinking of like poles flipping and things like that in a magnet, no, I'm just kidding.
I was thinking more of like reversing paralog.
Sure.
Specific map.
Yeah, the only thing, so a connection with Lydia would have been Ararat, which would have been in eastern Turkey. So... Trying to think. Yeah. But I don't think Ararat ever took on any significance. I don't remember Heizer mentioning that. Anybody? So, yeah.
I may have misunderstood his point, but I think it was like Mount Ramon or all those.
Yeah.
Ugaritic deities like hanging out. But northern.
And that is in the northern part of Israel, right? All right, all right. I'll go back and think about that. Okay, thanks, thanks. I'll check that out this week. So what, did everybody catch what Andrew's mentioning here? So just talking about the north. I think the only hiccup to that is just with Gog and Magog, like being in the list of nations and descendants, and those individuals actually went to and settled in certain regions. But I like, I like where your head's at. And honestly, that interpretation might actually fit here to some degree with kind of this spiritual battle that we see taking place, with Satan being let loose and stirring up the nations for conflict. Interesting.
So how far is north?
You're reading it like I am. So, yeah, no, it's, um... We don't really have that clue, not even in Ezekiel, I would say. So, which is kind of a general direction, right? So... And that's why I mentioned of, you know, anybody that's attacking is coming around the Euphrates through Syria and then dropping down, taking some of the main highways that, you know, divide Israel along the plains and then right along the Jordan River. So that is their strategic, you know, coming in. And so it's, doesn't matter how you look at it, it's from the north. So a little bit of irony there. So, you know, would that be mentioning the Babylonians, the Chaldeans, you know, the Assyrians, who are definitely, you know, to the north, northeast, or even the Persians? So... Yeah, yeah, that's good. All right, any other thoughts? Okay, so moving into verse 10. "And the devil who deceived them was thrown into the lake of fire and brimstone, where the beast and the false prophet are also; and they will be tormented day and night forever and ever." So it's interesting, as we read through this, that like we are receiving, even within the narrative that we're reading, and regardless of interpretation, there is a chronological order of events within the narrative itself. And so if you want to read it this way, that we have the loop, but now we've kind of straightened out in the home stretch. So now these are building clearly upon each other, moving towards and into eternity. So in verse 10, "So the devil does not share the same fate as those; he has led to the final assault. They are devoured by fire from heaven; but he is cast into the lake of fire, of burning sulfur. In the preceding chapter, the beast and false prophet were cast into the fiery lake of burning sulfur," chapter 19, verse 20. "They are now joined by the arch-culprit, the devil himself." For those of you keeping track, a thousand years have passed, and they're still there. "Following the great white throne, judgment, death, and Hades; and all whose names are not found in the book of life are to be cast into the same fiery grave." And so that'll be coming up very shortly, chapter 20, verses 14 and 15. "The torment of the unholy trinity continues unceasingly, day and night, forever and ever." Dr. Ladd interprets this figure as describing in picturesque language a real fact in the spiritual world, the final and everlasting destruction of the forces of evil which have plagued men since the Garden of Eden. Now, there is kind of where this episode ends, and then John sees something else. So we're gonna shift again within the vision. So just as kind of like a hard stop right there, does anybody else, does anybody have any questions about verse 10 with the devil and his fate? Does anybody else, does anybody have any questions about verse 10 with the devil and his fate? For all the trouble that he has caused since the beginning, it's a little anticlimactic almost, but buttons it up nicely anyways. Really, and technically, if this were to continue in chronological order, Satan is taken care of before the final judgment.
Why keep doing it?
If, if you know that's where you're going to end up, why keep doing it? So it would, everything I would say is absolutely presumptuous and.
That's fine.
But I, thanks, I don't know if I can, but, but here I go. And so I, I think honestly, it's hard for us to wrap our minds around it because, because we're here because of grace. We're here on a Sunday night studying 2,000 year old writings at the newest because of grace. Because we love the Lord and this beautiful story that he has woven us into. And to know that there is a figure that was in the presence of God and immediately rebelled. Right, that rebelled against the God of the universe. And was cast down to the earth in the midst of his creation. And if you were to think about, as we look around, image bearers of Yahweh. I don't know, never thought about it this way before, but it's almost a special kind of torment since the devil's been here and since humanity's been here, because he's surrounded by image bearers of Yahweh. And to add insult to injury, Yahweh sends his own son into the world. And in a sense, in a moment that probably the enemy is thinking of his greatest victory, or maybe it's just an insignificant one, if he really didn't know who was being crucified that day. It was the seal for his loss, like just sealed the deal right there. So I think there's a lot to be bitter about, a lot to be angry, and to know that his fate from the moment he lost his place, he was just destined to wreak havoc until the day that he is put in his place, until he's put into an abyss, imprisoned in that, and until, and you know, and as soon as he's let out, after a thousand, you get a thousand year timeout, maybe you'll learn a thing or two, think about your actions. Let loose, and what does he do? Oh, it's a party. And everybody's invited. We just got to go take the cake. That's it. So that, that is what he is like set to do as soon as he's released. So I mean, it just shows the depth of the chaos that he wants to wreak upon God's creation, upon every image bearer, upon everybody who has stayed faithful to the God that he rebelled against. So when we obey, when we are living and following Jesus, we're living in a faithfulness that he denied, that he refused. That he sacrificed in his own pride. And there's a point where I mean, maybe you just, you know, there's no coming back from this, so I might as well dig in.
One of the highest.
Yep, depending on how we interpret some of the verses, you know, Isaiah, and, and so, yeah, it's, there was, it denotes some level of responsibility.
And then.
Some chiefly office.
And then somehow he convinced others.
Right, right, but we don't have them mentioned. Now, maybe those are the angels that are judged in the age to come. That is what we do read, so. Yeah, so maybe there is grace for them. We don't have their fate recorded. Okay. So just to frame it as, we'll remember this life in the age to come. And can we sin in that, in that time?
If we did it once.
If we did it once? So you know what, I'm going to hold my answer, and I'll do a little research this week and see if there are some verses to back up. I have thoughts, I've thought about this before, but as far as scripture references, let me, let me pull that together just to do service to them.
Are we getting together next week?
Next time we need.
What's next Sunday?
Yeah.
It's not Thanksgiving.
Okay.
That's the week after. Lord willing.
Okay.
Next Sunday. All right, so remind me. So, okay. What was that?
About this week, huh?
All right. Okay, got that written down, because I would totally forget by the end of this class. No, I think there is a, so when it says that we were made in the image of God, like there's an implication that is not just physical, but physical is a part of that.
Right.
And so I don't think it's a coincidence, it talks about Yahweh sitting on his throne. So, um, but yeah, so physically, mentally, emotionally, and we see a lot of this, these, you know, personifications like throughout scripture. So. There you go. That's all I got. Any other question? Yes, Sherry.
Would it be simple to lay away your desk to whether we actually wrap this up next week?
Whether we wrap this up? No, we're probably not going to wrap this up, we're probably going to go into like the first two weeks of December. No, I am bound and determined to wrap this up before Christmas. Doing, doing my best here. I know, I feel it. Oh, man. It's kind of the idea with Jesus becoming mortal flesh, right? Being that sacrifice. Yeah, and we don't have any mention of that for the angels. All we have mentioned, like I said, is just judgment. Paul makes mention of that, we have mentioned here in Revelation by John. So, yeah, there's no mention of sacrifice for angels or anything like it. All right, 11 through 15. Oh, we're going to get into all kinds of stuff. More stuff, more stuff, like we haven't been into enough stuff yet. All right. So I'm going to read 11 through 15, and then jump into the notes here. Then I saw a great white throne, and him who sat upon it, from whose presence earth and heaven fled away, and no place was found for them. And I saw the dead, the great and the small, standing before the throne, and books were opened, and another book was opened, which is the book of life. And the dead were judged from the things which were written in the books according to their deeds. And the seed gave up the dead which were in it. And death and Hades gave up the dead which were in them, and they were judged, and every one of them according to their deeds. Then death and Hades were thrown into the lake of fire. This is the second death, the lake of fire. And if anyone's name was not found written in the book of life, he was thrown into the lake of fire. All right, with this vision, the theme of judgment on evil finds its final expression. After being bound for 1,000 years, Satan has been released only to resume his active antagonism against the people of God. Those who were deceived by him and took up his cause were devoured by fire and from heaven, while Satan himself was thrown to the lake of burning sulfur to be tormented there forever, along with the beast and the false prophet. The time has now come to judge the rest of the dead. With this vision, we close forever the chapter on sin and stand ready to enter the eternal state of glory. We just got to get through the judgment first. We now come to the scene of final judgment. John sees a great white throne and one who sits upon it. A somewhat similar portrayal is found in Daniel 7, where the ancient of days takes his seat upon a throne flaming with fire to execute judgment upon the kingdoms of this world. In Revelation, the throne is great in size and white, or shining in appearance, so like a white light. Its size conveys the grandeur of its authority, and its appearance reflects the presence of the glory of God. There is some question about the identity of the one who sits upon the throne. The New Testament teaches generally that judgment has been committed to the Son. John 5:22 specifically says, the Father judges no one, but has entrusted all judgment to the Son. See also 2 Corinthians 5:10 and 2 Timothy 4:1. Similarly, in 1 Enoch, eschatological judgment is the function of the Messiah. On that day, my elect one shall sit on the throne of glory and shall try their works. Yet in the present passage, it is apparently God, the Father, who is judged. Elsewhere in Revelation, the one seated upon the throne is the Father. Okay, you ready for a list of verses?
Slowly.
Slowly. This is, these are all just in Revelation. So basically, the idea is that when the throne is mentioned, we know who's sitting on it, right? So Revelation 4:2. Oh, look what I have. All right. 4:2 and 9, 5:1 and 7, and 13. Chapter 6, verse 16. Chapter 7, verse 10, and 15. And then Chapter 19, verse 4, and Chapter 21, verse 5. Yep, yep, the Father on the throne. So it is more natural in the present context to see the Father rather than the Son in the role of judge. The ease with which the New Testament speaks both of the judgment seat of Christ, 2 Corinthians 5:10, and of the judgment seat of God, Romans 14:10, implies a unity that makes unnecessary any quibbling over exact assignment of functions. In his gospel, John records the statement of Jesus, I and the Father are one. John 10:30. So we see earth and heaven flee away before the awesome grandeur of God seated upon the throne of judgment. This action may be only poetic imagery expressing the fear of the corrupt, of the corruptible in the presence of God. Although it may be understood more literally as the dissolution of the universe as we know it. Let's just think about that one. The dissolution of the universe as we know it. In preparation for the new heaven and new earth that will shortly appear. Chapter 21, verse 1. Isaiah 51, verse 6, spoke of a time when the heavens will vanish like smoke, and the earth will wear out like a garment. Jesus contrasted the permanency of his words to the transitoriness of heaven and earth. Matthew, Chapter 24, verse 35. Heaven and earth will pass away, right? But my words will never. Peter indicates that it is by fire that the heaven and earth are to be destroyed, 2 Peter, Chapter 3, verses 10 through 12. Some feel that we are dealing with two variant traditions concerning the end of the physical universe. Whether it simply passes away or is melted by fire is of minor import.
Can you say that again?
Whether it simply passes away or is melted by fire is of minor importance.
Unless it's you.
Rather just disappear rather than melt. Glad we've all agreed on that, let's move on. Remember, we don't have a saying. The essential truth of the entire description, however, is that God is in charge and that he will execute a just sentence upon all that has fallen under the control of evil. In its flight from the presence of God, no place is found for the terrified universe. One is reminded of the psalmist's query, where can I go from your spirit? Where can I flee from your presence? Psalm 139:7. There is no place, for God is everywhere. Yeah, and I'm actually, and that's, I mean, that's a good point, when we talk about the lake of fire, when we talk about, I mean, God's presence is everywhere. And when you say that, it's not that he is there there. His control, his reach, his authority. It is in all of those places. A lot of times, you know, talk about hell or the lake of fire, it's just out of the presence of God. Oh, no, no, it's there. So as we are getting ready to jump into verse 12, any questions from 11? Then I saw a great white throne and him who sat upon it, from whose presence earth and heaven fled away, and no place was found for them. Any questions on verse 11? Well, and that's, that's what we were saying, like, either this is expressing like kind of finito, like poof, it's done. Like the old things have passed. Then judgment, and then new heavens, new earth. So, so, just kidding. So, so basically, like what happens is, so there's two different ideas. One, it's just basically a start over. So heaven, earth fled away, basically rolled up, boom, done. And then all of a sudden, after the judgment, there's a new heaven and new earth appear, just like, basically, we're starting back at the beginning. The other option is that basically when we see, instead of a new heaven and new earth, it is read and understood as a renewed heaven and a renewed earth. A remake, a remodel. Because, actually, let's go to Genesis 1. In the beginning. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. The earth was formless and void. So that can be read, the earth became formless and void. And darkness was over the surface of the deep, and the Spirit of God was moving over the surface of the waters. So somebody subscribe to a cataclysm theory of sorts that basically, as we see in the beginning, there is potential for everything that we've just read through this book, that what is being done is bringing the earth back to a formless and void place. And then, and then the week starts over. Well, that's what I'm saying, like in this theory, they haven't gone away. It's a remake, a remodel of this one. So this takes place after the resurrection. And you know, when you talk and you're like, oh, I'm gonna branch out onto this topic and this topic and this topic, depending on what people believe, you get really lost. So, okay, let me try this. So I'm just killing time till Brenda gets back. But imagine, if you will, and mind you, we're gonna get into this a lot more in chapter twenty-one. So, you know, this is a little bit jumping ahead, but just because here it mentions that heaven and earth fled away, right? But if in the resurrection, our physical bodies are reformed. Like just exactly what we were reading from Paul, just as what we are seeing here in chapter twenty, that as they're resurrected, they ruin reign with the Lord for a thousand years. Remember, who was the first fruits of the resurrection? Jesus, that's right. Was he physical? Yeah, if not, I'm gonna call you agnostic. Just kidding. That was one of the early heresies, right? Because they denied his physicality because the physical is evil. But obviously, Jesus disproves that. He comes back to life, he's physical, he's eating with them, he's hanging out with them. Hey, Thomas. So, hey, Thomas, you know, stick your hand in my side. Finger in the nail holes. This isn't a ghostly apparition. So Jesus is the first fruits of the resurrection. So this should frame what we're about to read with judgment. So as physical as we are now, that is how we will be with the Lord forever. It's how Adam and Eve were made in the very beginning. It also frames the other side of this for those cast into the lake of fire. Yep, so we talked about that a few weeks ago, where it's like earthly body two point O, where there is some level of interdimensionality that can happen there. Where, yeah, I mean, whether it's moving through walls or just appearing into the other room. Yeah, there's a few things, I mean, and all of a sudden, he's on the shore of Galilee cooking up some fish. As a few of them are walking along, make sure you raise your hand, please. And so, I mean, it's pretty amazing what we see, and we've actually had glimpses of this throughout scripture. Elijah popping up in different places. Miraculous things happening. All of a sudden, like when we read about the miraculous things, what if that's, those are glimpses of ability in the age to come? So it's nothing to build like a big doctrine around, but I don't know, pretty cool. Just the possibility. It, it's almost, there's a purging of the curse on the earth. So so as we, you know, draw those things together, there's a couple of different theories of what happens in the age to come and how it gets there, and really earth and heaven. Because really, what we're about to read in twenty-one is a merging of heaven and earth. Which causes us to look back and read those first few chapters in Genesis a little bit deeper from a perspective of like, it's like God was setting the stage for that merger. Like it was like his little incursion, you know, into his broader creation. Because remember, he made the garden of Eden separate and brought Adam and Eve into it. He made them and then brought them into the garden. All right, so verse twelve. "And I saw the dead, the great and the small, standing before the throne, and books were opened, or scrolls were opened, and another book was opened, which is the book of life. And the dead were judged from the things which were written in the books according to their deeds." So from Mounts here, "Before the great white throne stand the dead, both great and small." These are part of the rest of the dead who were resurrected at the close of the thousand year period. If the first resurrection is limited to actual martyrs, then the judgment of verses eleven through fifteen involves both believer and non-believer. "If the second resurrection is of the wicked only, then the judgment is of those who will in fact be consigned to the lake of fire." I read this as both believer and non-believer. We're, we're getting there, yep. Reference to the book of life as part of the final testimony suggests a general judgment of the entire human race, excluding the martyrs who had already entered into their reward. "There is no significance in the change from small and great to great and small." So it's usually referred to small and great in chapter eleven, chapter thirteen, chapter nineteen, but here it's great and small. "The point is that no one is so important as to be immune from judgment, and no one is so unimportant as to make judgment inappropriate." "The great white throne judgment is not arbitrary, but based on the evidence written by the life of every person." "Books," plural, "are opened, and the dead are judged on the basis of what they have done as recorded therein." "The teaching of judgment by works runs throughout both the Old Testament and the New Testament." Psalm sixty-two, verse twelve, gives expression to the commonly accepted principle that God requites a person according to his work. In Jeremiah seventeen, ten, God says, "I, Yahweh, search the heart and examine the mind to reward a man according to his conduct, according to what his deeds deserve." The same principle is taught in the New Testament. Paul writes that God will give to each person according to what he has done, Romans two, six. And Peter reminds his readers that God judges each man's work impartially, 1 Peter, chapter one, verse seventeen. "The issue is not salvation by works, but works as the irrefutable evidence of a person's actual relationship with God." Salvation is by faith, but faith is inevitably revealed by the works it produces. In addition to the record of people's deeds, there is another book to be opened. So imagine all the books of people's deeds. But there's another book that gets opened. And it is the book of life. The idea of a divine register is an ancient one. Isaiah speaks of those who had been recorded among the living in Jerusalem, Isaiah four, three. Many, many years before, Moses had pleaded with God to blot him out of his book, a register of those included within the theocratic community, rather than to withhold forgiveness from those who had sinned. "The relationship between the record of people's deeds and the book of life is not clear. It has been suggested that those whose names are missing from the citizen list have access to the books of deeds as a last assessment of their claim to remain. The list in its final or revised state would then admit to the new Jerusalem coming down out of heaven," chapter twenty-one, verse two. "In any case, judgment proceeds on the evidence supplied both by the record of deeds and the book of life. This seems to support a general judgment rather than one restricted to the wicked dead." So the idea, as Mounts is kind of talking through this. So I've always seen it as like you actually have the book of deeds, right? But then in the book of life, there's a cross referencing that happens that you could have your own book. Let's pick the biggest one here. Of all the things that you've ever done, good and bad. And all the things you didn't do. But then let's check the register over here. The book of life. And regardless of how this spells out, because maybe it's just the last third. Right? Maybe it's just the last couple of pages. Maybe it's just the last sentence that's in red. But your name's in here. So that's the essence of the gospel. That is that saving faith, that's grace, right? And I think it's important for us to grasp that instead of trying to fight the idea that it's a works-based salvation. We cannot escape the fact that for those of us in Christ, to know what the God of the universe went to, went through to save us, that we can just treat it as nothing. There is an expectation on all of us to live faithfully to the commitment that we profess. That, that's the whole idea of holiness, right? It is preparation for heaven. It is preparation to be in the presence of God. It is of vital importance for us to grasp this. I mean, Paul even talks about working out his salvation with fear and trembling. And it's not that we have to be afraid, it's just we have to be focused. Because, because God is worth it. Because if we recognize our lives as worship, oh, man, are we taking every opportunity captive for the kingdom? Like we're, when we claim Jesus, we claim the kingdom of God. That we are members and citizens of it and that we have a mission since we are a part of it. And that's to further it. That is to not just talk about it, but even as we are in enemy territory, to make our own incursions of light into the darkness. That is the mission for as long as we are here, however long or short. He has been faithful to us and we live out that faithfulness with intentionality. So verse twelve. Any thoughts, any questions? We still got thirty minutes. Can't just leave you on that thought. Wish I could. But we got a few more verses in this chapter. It just keeps going. Is anybody unclear on the judgment with the books and everything else? So I think this is where the kingdom parables come in. Right? To those much have been given, much is required.
So maybe this is the one talent guy.
And it's just, and what, what it's all illustrating is just faithfulness. Being faithful with what you've been given. I mean, think about it, like if we have been, you know, we have been met with the revelation of the gospel early on in our life, and the Lord is giving us seventy, eighty more years, you know, from the age of nine, from the age of twenty, you know, whatever, well, that's opportunity. Like, oh, man, I mean, could you imagine how bad the person who had the deathbed profession of Christ? Like when they get there, it's just like, oh, man, I lived my life as an enemy of God. You know, no less grateful, right? I mean, you know, it's not that, but it's a missed opportunity. Like that's what this life is for each and every one of us, it echoes eternity. We just got done reading about this and we're still reading about it and the effect that this life has on eternity. Not just ours, but all those around us. We're either living just for this life or we're living for eternity. We're either living for ourselves or for God. That's the call of repentance, right? And why would anybody repent if they didn't have Jesus? Like we repent because because we love the Lord and we have a conviction of the Holy Spirit to like not keep doing that. Yeah, I mean, that's there's a lot of things that, you know, maybe we just get numb to by being in fellowship and being, you know, in the faith, but that's why we gotta get out there. The more you put yourself out there, like the more you're gonna be reminded of, oh, that's why I'm in this. That's why I am holding on to Jesus. The more you get out there and mix it up with the world and the more you actually like are ministering to others, it is a constant, that is, that is the, this is the secret sauce of disciple making. To see someone else come to Christ and the transformation and how they're on fire and, I mean, willing to go tell everybody whether they are rejected or not, they don't even care. What does that do for us who've been walking for decades with the Lord? It's like, oh, yeah, I remember that. Oh, I feel a little shame right now, but you know, hey, I'm with you on this. Let's go, let's go together and yeah, share the gospel. Or let's get our hands dirty. Let's go help some people, you know, whatever it might be, whatever opportunity the Lord is providing for you to make a difference in this world, in somebody's world. Because it's always a reminder, it's always sharpening us, and it's always reminding us of our calling, our mission, what we've been saved to. And to that, you know, if, if those sins are And to that, you know, if, if those sins are completely blotted out, and in this book of deeds, is it just the good things? And not the bad things for the Christian? Or is it just the name that is in the Book of Life? But it says deeds, so we would think good and bad. But if we think of the letters, I know your deeds, right? But it's always said in a positive sense, like, as in your good works. So so if it was being consistent, and they were judged by their deeds, would that just be on the good things that they had done? So just putting that out there, it doesn't really change the fact of the judgment. So regardless, our goal is to have our name in the Book of Life. Right? And that is only through Jesus. The judgment? Oh yeah, yeah, he'll judge fairly. So Well, that's the thing about the judgment, nobody's going to tell God he was wrong. But that should all the more embolden us in this life, this one life we have to live. Of getting our priorities straight, and whatever that is, and let me, like, say this here, that doesn't mean become more religious. I 110% want to encourage you, read the scripture, and pray, and pray for the Holy Spirit to guide you, to open your eyes, to see the opportunities that God has set up specifically for you to fulfill each day, every week, every month. Absolutely, just like, God has things for you to do. So it's not a matter of just doing more Bible studies and just going to church every time the door's open, or pick any number of things. It's just a matter of being faithful to what God is calling you to do. And he will absolutely answer that prayer. It doesn't matter how old you are, it doesn't matter how long you've been working with the Lord or walking with him, it doesn't matter how much money you have, or stationed in life, or single or married, or whatever. He wants us to walk faithfully with him. So that's the grand adventure of this. The first, the first act of getting on track is repentance. All right, 13. "And the sea gave up the dead which were in it; and death and Hades gave up the dead which were in them; and they were judged, every one of them, according to their deeds." So the sea now gives up its dead, as do death and Hades, and all people are judged on the basis of what they have done. So basically, you know, 13 is not out of sequence, right, since resurrection must precede judgment. John mentions the sea, death, and Hades all giving up their dead to indicate and emphasize the universal scope of judgment. And remember, I mean, there were different ideas that anybody lost to the sea was just lost forever. A watery grave. They were swallowed up in chaos. And so even reading this kind of sets a lot of those records straight, where everybody is giving up the dead. And so even with death and Hades, everybody is releasing them for the judgment. So the sea is specifically mentioned, oh, I think I jumped ahead, "to show that no one, not even those whose bodies had gone unburied because lost at sea, would escape resurrection and judgment." In chapter 6, verse 8, "Death and Hades appeared as the rider of the pale horse and his inseparable companion." In chapter 1, verse 18, "They designate the regions of the underworld whose keys are in the possession of the glorified Christ." That's pretty cool. Here, they appear as the realm of the dead, and in the following verse, "they personify all that remains of the effects of wickedness in the world." So remember, death and Hades entered the world at the moment sin entered the world. So this is basically the last remnants of, of the curse. Yeah, 13 is kind of circling back to show everybody, yep. Yeah, nobody's escaping this judgment. So it's just kind of, you know, he's laying it out, great white throne, books opened, everybody's judged. And to further that, to deepen that idea, everybody's brought in for this. Death, Hades, the sea, everybody's turning them up loose. In Acts, chapter 2, verse 27 and 31, "Hades denotes the place of all souls during the intermediate state. But elsewhere, such as in Luke 16:23, it is the abode of the unrighteous dead." This dual concept of Hades existed within later Judaism and carried over into New Testament thought. We've kind of touched on this with paradise and "Thus, nothing definitive can be determined from the term itself about the nature of those resurrected. A general resurrection of all except martyrs seems most plausible." So that's kind of what I was saying before, that it's literally just everybody else but the martyrs, those who came to life in the first resurrection. 14 and 15, we're going to combine these. "Then death and Hades were thrown into the lake of fire." This is the second death, the lake of fire. "And if anyone's name was not found written in the Book of Life, he was thrown into the lake of fire." So, again, from Mounts, actually. So from Keener, his commentary on 13 and 14, "Jewish texts often spoke of the final day on which the wicked would be cast into the abyss of fire." Example, first Enoch. "Hades rendered hell in the King James Version, was the abode of the dead, named for the Greek deity of the underworld, but not associated with him in Jewish texts." The equivalent of the Old Testament realm of the dead is Sheol. "In many Jewish texts, as here, the wicked were held there under judgment until their final destruction or place of torture. In Jewish texts, Hades would return what was entrusted to it." "Many Gentiles questioned whether those who died unburied, especially at sea, had a part in the afterlife. Others questioned how those lost at sea could be resurrected." This passage is clear that even the sea would give up the dead for judgment. Just reading on Keener's commentary on 15, "Most Jewish people believed that all normal Jews, i.e. those who follow Judaism, would be saved, along with the small percentage of the righteous among the nations, Gentiles. The rest would be damned." Israel's faith had always been "worshipping one supreme God," John would add here, "the further exclusivity that God was truly worshipped only through Christ." 1 John, chapter 2, verse 23. "And the Old Testament prophets had proclaimed a day of judgment that would call the nations as well as Israel to account. It would be too late to repent at that time." So from Mounts, "Death and Hades are now cast into the lake of fire, where the beast, the false prophet, and the devil are already in torment." In 1 Corinthians 15, verse 26, "Death is the last enemy to be destroyed." Also, 1 Corinthians 15, first verses 54 and 55. Coupled with Hades, it symbolizes the effects of sin and wickedness that entered the world through the sin of the first man, Romans 5:12. "In a great psalm of thanksgiving, the prophet Isaiah declares that God will swallow up death forever." Isaiah 25:8. "The last vestige of sins unlawful hegemony is cast into the lake of fire. The lake of fire indicates not only the stern punishment awaiting the enemies of the righteous, but also their full and final defeat. It is the second death that is the destiny of those whose temporary resurrection results only in a return to death and its punishment." In Matthew, chapter 25, verse 41, "Jesus indicated that the eternal fire was prepared for the devil and his angels." So we were talking a little bit about that before. "In the final judgment, all whose names do not appear in the Book of Life will share their fate. The grim simplicity of the narrative stands in contrast with the lurid descriptions found in Jewish apocalypticism." In 1 Enoch, 48:9, "The wicked are given over into the hands of the elect, and whose presence they burn like straw in the fire, and sink like lead in water." Later in 1 Enoch, "the apostates burn in a fiery abyss in full view of Jerusalem." 1 Enoch, 90, chapter 90, verse 26. "And so ends the tale of the first city." So switching gears a little bit here. "Babylon has ruled the world with regard for no one but herself. She is a great prostitute who has seduced the nations into following her illicit way of life. Inspired by Satan, she has taken into her own hands the right to control the entire inhabited world. Her deceptive practices have lured all but the faithful into ungodliness. Her doom, however, is certain. She will be reduced to a heap of burning ashes, and her lovers will stand afar and marvel at how great has been her fall. Heaven will be filled with the hallelujahs of those who have resisted her claims, even to the point of death. The triumphant Messiah will return, and all who have fallen under the control of the beast and false prophet will be destroyed. The death of the martyrs will be vindicated. Satan will be bound in the abyss for a thousand years, while the church will reign triumphant with the Lamb. Babylon has fallen. The forces of Satan in this world will be destroyed, and he and his henchmen will burn forever in the lake of fire." That concludes chapter 20. Any questions in the three minutes we have remaining? When it mentions death, yeah, so that, that is actually my fault, or my fault, my, my thought, the delineation between Hades and death as being like, just kind of death being a, a general collective term, Hades being the realm where bodies had been placed into the earth, and then death being for those who had basically been unburied. So you would have all three categories. Yep, that, that was my thought, and I think, I think Mounts alluded to that. He didn't really go into it, though, so. Because, you know, what he did, he referenced back to the horsemen, right, death and Hades as companions, so I think that was like a glimpse at more of a collective sense. So, yeah. That's good. Melody? Oh, there you go. All right. Any other questions? I'm just glad it was, you know, we could stay right there at the surface tonight, you know, real shallow, just kind of skim through basic Christianity stuff, you know? Because that's what we do, so. Yeah, right. So, so for next week, will we remember our past lives? And will we be able to sin in the age to come? That will be interesting as we get into the new heaven and new earth, the new Jerusalem. And then after that, chapter 22. So maybe we'll finish up next week, who knows?